Bienvenidos a todos, vamos a empezar. Soy John Payne, soy el director ejecutivo de Show Me Cannabis. Y estoy muy feliz de que, con el turnout de esta noche, que todos vinieron y participaron en esta discusión. Y la forma en que esto va a funcionar es que tenemos siete panelistas aquí, cuatro de ellos en general pro-reformas de las leyes de cannabis, tres de ellos en general en contra de esa reforma. Y vamos a alternar hacia del otro lado. La discusión será moderada por el presidente de Three Rivers College, Devin Stevenson, aquí. Y solo voy a dar algunos comentarios introductorios, pero luego volveré y haré nueve minutos de mi primer pro, y luego alternaremos pro y con. Y eso tomará aproximadamente una hora, y después de eso tendremos una pregunta y respuesta con la audiencia, y ustedes pueden venir y hacer preguntas aquí y hacer preguntas al panel. Así que con eso, voy a pasar la cuestión a el Dr. Stevenson, y luego probablemente volveré en un momento. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. Bien, repita, podemos hacerlo mejor en Missouri Southeast. Buenas noches a todos. Ahí vamos. Bienvenidos a nuestro colegio esta noche. Estamos emocionados de que estéis aquí. Three Rivers College es la institución de educación superior pública más rápido del estado de Missouri. Y estamos muy orgullosos del apoyo que tenemos en esta comunidad. Y estamos agradecidos esta noche por este intercambio. Este centro tenim que vivir, el teatro en el que estáis esta noche, está disponible para uso por miembros de la comunidad para eventos, cuando tales eventos no confluyen con actividades previamente programadas. El asesoramiento de eventos y reuniones públicas del colegio no indica que el colegio esté en favor o en contra de un grupo o un tema en particular. Como institución pública, Three Rivers College debe elegir entre una de dos cosas: una institución cerrada, que no permitirá a ningún grupo o individuo fuera del colegio llevar un evento, o estar abierto a todos. Y como institución de la comunidad, creemos que el servicio público proporcionado por el asesoramiento de eventos y reuniones públicas es una parte importante de la misión del colegio y sirve al bien mayor de esta comunidad. Mientras el colegio ha sido y permanecerá una escuela sin drogas y lugar de trabajo, el colegio es un apoyo a los valores de la libertad de expresión y debate. Y el colegio trabaja día a día para animar el discurso libre y abierto en nuestro cuerpo estudiantil. Y trabajamos para enseñar habilidades de pensamiento crítico y analítica. Y somos una organización que expresa las virtudes morales de los beneficios del intercambio de ideas. Así que déjeme decir, como presidente de la institución, estamos muy contentos de que todos estéis aquí esta noche. Y creemos que es muy importante que compartamos e intercambien ideas. Déjeme presentar a nuestro panel primero, y luego comenzaremos sus comentarios en la reunión de la Cámara de Representantes de esta noche. Primero de todo, tenemos un abogado de defensa local criminal, abogado Dan Moore. Dan, estamos contentos de que estéis aquí, les doy una mano a Dan. También estamos contentos de que esta noche tengamos a un ex paciente de marihuana médica, Daryl Bertrand de Ozark. Esperen un segundo. También estamos contentos de que esta noche tengamos, desde Springfield, el Dr. Gil Mobley, quien también practica en Washington State. Dr. Mobley, bienvenido. Pueden volver y decirle a mi amigo y presidente de la OTC que este es realmente el país de Dios aquí, no Springfield.
No, no es de debate.
Bien, muy bien. También estamos contentos de tener a John Payne. John es el director ejecutivo de Show Me Cannabis y es un miembro del comité republicano del 20º Ward de la ciudad de St. Louis. John, bienvenido a Three Rivers College. Y nuestro amigo de aquí en Popper Bluff, el jefe Danny Whiteley, el jefe de la policía del departamento de policía de Popper Bluff. Jefe Whiteley. Y también estamos muy contentos de tener al jefe adjunto Jeff Rowland con nosotros esta noche del departamento de policía de Popper Bluff. Tenemos a un otro miembro del panel aquí que no tengo en esta lista, John.
Sí, vengo de la retirada de la policía de la policía.
Bien. Kevin Glazer, que es un oficial de la policía de la retirada. Kevin, un pro o un con?
Soy un pro.
Un pro o un con?
Soy un...
Muy bien. Bien, John Payne, creo que estamos listos para la primera ronda aquí. Déjame compartir con ustedes lo que vamos a hacer. Vamos a dar a cada uno de estos miembros nueve minutos para hablar. Tenemos alguien de atrás, nuestro estimado miembro facultario, Margaret Orlando, que es nuestro guardián oficial. Ella te hará preguntas a nueve minutos, nos estamos cortando. Así que espero que hayan practicado estos comentarios y los han cuelgo a nueve minutos. John Payne, usted es el primero.
Bien. Espera, creo que esto es... Bien, eso es mejor. Así que déjeme empezar diciendo que es un honor ser aquí esta noche. Este es mi pueblo natal. Hemos hecho aproximadamente 14 de estas reuniones en todo el estado, pero es un honor especial estar aquí, de vuelta en casa, hablando de esto aquí. Ahora, creo que cuando hablamos de este tema, el debate a menudo pierde el marco, porque creo que se pierde en las semillas, como sea. Y creo que el problema es que la gente quiere enfocarse en si la marihuana es buena o mala. Y creo que esa no es la verdadera pregunta. Creo que, como muchas cosas, no es ni buena ni mala. Puede ser buena si eres un paciente médico, como era el de Daryl, creo que usarla es algo bueno, creo que puede ayudarte. Ahora, ciertamente hay gente allá afuera que tiene un problema y se abusan de cannabis. Eso es un problema, pero eso no es necesariamente decir que el cannabis es todo malo, que somos todos buenos. Todo depende de cómo la gente lo usa. La verdadera pregunta es si debería ser un caso criminal. La ley criminal existe para proteger nuestros derechos, nuestra vida y nuestra propiedad. Sabéis, la declaración de la independencia dice que los gobiernos se instituyen entre hombres para proteger nuestra vida, libertad y búsqueda de felicidad. Creo que arrestar a alguien por cannabis no hace ninguna de esas cosas. Sin embargo, da un coste tremendo a nuestra sociedad. Así que hicimos un estudio el año pasado por el economista de Harvard, Jeff Myron. Y estimó que la cantidad de dinero que gastamos en la fiscalización de la ley cada año, arrestando y procesando a la gente por cannabis, es aproximadamente 90 millones de dólares. Nos perdemos en otros 59 millones de dólares que podríamos tener en ingresos fiscales si impusimos cannabis de una manera similar a alcohol. Esto suma hasta 149 millones de dólares. Con eso, un poco de perspectiva, el estado de Missouri gasta 136.4 millones de dólares en el año fiscal 2011 en su sistema de colegio de la comunidad. Así que estamos gastando 13 millones de dólares más cada año para prohibir cannabis que somos en nuestros colegios de la comunidad. Eso me parece una prioridad desplazada. Otra forma de pensar sobre estos costes son el costo de oportunidades de la fiscalización legal. Es decir, las otras cosas que podrían estar haciendo. Vamos a tratarlo a nivel local. Así que en 2011, hubo 220 arrestos en la cumbre Butler para posesión de marihuana, 15 para venta y fabricación. ¿Alguien quiere adivinar cuántos arrestos hubo en total para todas las otras drogas combinadas? Son 107. Así que todas las otras drogas combinadas, arrestamos a la mitad del tasa de cannabis. Ahora, eso me parece, de nuevo, como algunas prioridades desplazadas. Creo que pocas personas estarían en desacuerdo de que el cannabis es seguro que el metamfetamina, el cocaine y el heroin. Sin embargo, arrestamos a la vez el tasa para eso. Y eso no es una aberración, eso no es para criticar la cumbre Butler. Eso es lo que pasa en el estado. Sabéis, los números son un poco diferentes, pero la tendencia general está ahí. También otra cosa que debemos pensar es el porcentaje de clarificación para otros crímenes. Así que eso significa, cuántos otros crímenes están arrestados y cargados contra ellos. Así que hubo 18,818 personas arrestadas en Missouri por posesión de marihuana en 2011. Hubo 26,852 crímenes violentos reportados. ¿Alguien quiere tomar un análisis de cuál es el porcentaje de clarificación para los crímenes violentos? 50.8%. Eso significa que el 49.2% de todos los crímenes violentos, casi la mitad de todos los crímenes violentos, nunca se ha hecho un arresto o cargado. Y eso incluye clarificaciones extraordinarias, que es cuando alguien muere en el proceso de cargos. Crímenes de propiedad, el porcentaje es incluso menor. Hay 200,000 crímenes de propiedad, el 20.9% de ellos son clarificados. Si tu carro es robado, hay una chance de que se haga un arresto por ese crimen. A mí me parece que deberías perseguir a la gente que está robando autos más que a la gente que está usando cannabis. Si se produce un crimen, solo hay una... Hay una chance del 47.4% de que ese crimen no sea clarificado. Ahora, traer eso... Sabéis, las estadísticas pueden ser algo abstractas. Así que para poner eso en un nivel individual, hay un tipo que sirve la vida en la prisión sin paro por un delito de cannabis. Él fue un presunto delito de cannabis persistente, tuvo tres delitos de cannabis, pero sin violencia. El nombre del tipo es Jeff Zansky, es de Sedalia. Todavía hay copias de The Riverfront Times allí, que tiene su historia en ella. Pero él ha estado en la prisión desde 1992, creo. Ahora, otro tipo de Sedalia fue encarcelado en 1989 por intento de crimen. El nombre del tipo es Ronald Wayne Reader. Ahora, fue liberado en medio de los 2000 y reofendió en 2012. Cometió otro crimen, alrededor de Katy Trail. Y luego, en el camino a la prisión, sobrepuso al abogado y lanzó un manjote de cuatro counties. Ahora, me parece que hubiera sido mejor mantener a ese tipo en la prisión por la vida sin paro la primera vez, en lugar de poner a alguien en la cárcel por un delito de cannabis. Ahora, podrían decir, bueno, sabéis... Si esta política alcanza sus objetivos, bueno, tal vez vale la pena. Pero creo que la prohibición de cannabis falla en todos sus objetivos más importantes. Primero de todo, no hay relación entre los arrestos y el uso de cannabis. De hecho, en los años 90, cuando los arrestos subieron dramáticamente a la mayor tasa de arrestos, y básicamente se ha plateado desde entonces, hicimos 131 arrestos por 100,000 personas en 1992. En 1998, eran 250 personas por 100,000 personas. Eso significa que estamos arrestando a alrededor de 600,000, 700,000 personas al año hasta finales de los 90. Y eso es lo que hacemos todavía hoy. Sin embargo, durante ese mismo periodo, el precio del cannabis baixó un 16%. Eso se basa en la Oficina Nacional de Control de la droga. Así que estás enforcing las leyes más fuertemente, sin embargo, el precio está baixando. Y la potencia aumentó un 53% durante ese mismo periodo. Ahora, si el precio cae y la potencia aumenta, ¿qué realmente hace la política? El uso también aumenta durante ese periodo. Aumentó del 7.9% en el año pasado al 11%, que fue el máximo en 2002. El uso pasado mes aumentó del 4.6% al 6.2%. Y esos números fueron particularmente dramáticos entre adolescentes. Entre los senores de la escuela secundaria, el uso casi duplicó en los años 90, a pesar de todos estos nuevos arrestos, a aproximadamente el 40% en el año pasado, el uso en el último mes, comparado con el 20% en el último mes en los primeros años. Y puedo hablar de esto de primera mano. Sabéis, actualmente no uso cannabis, pero cuando estaba en la escuela secundaria, probablemente no sea sorprendente para nadie que vaya a la escuela conmigo, pero lo hice. Y sabéis, si alguien iba a ser detenido, debería haber sido yo. Fui el ganador del ensayo, fui el representante de la clase de mi clase. Sin embargo, no me detuvo. De hecho, creo que son los adolescentes los menos susceptibles de ser detenidos porque el hecho es que esto es una consecuencia a largo plazo que estás tratando de imponer a la gente con una política criminal. ¿Y quién es realmente malo en pensar en las consecuencias a largo plazo? Los adolescentes, sí, exacto. Los adolescentes no procesan las consecuencias a largo plazo de la misma manera que el resto de nosotros. De hecho, es por eso que no los dejamos hacer muchas elecciones, es porque no procesan esas elecciones de la misma manera. Y así, imponer una pena de vida a alguien es... Eso es lo que pasa si estás cargado de un crimen. Eres un criminal por el resto de tu vida, no hay manera de deshacerse de ese castigo. Eso es excesivo y va a lastimar la vida de la persona, probablemente mucho más que lo que está haciendo. También esto permite al mercado criminal... Sabéis, hay una tentación para los adolescentes de ir al mercado criminal porque ahora mismo es un mercado completamente controlado. Y es mucho más fácil hacer unos cientos de dólares flipando cuarto libras en la escuela secundaria que hacer flipando cuarto libras en el dólar. Y así, si te preocupas por los adolescentes involucrados en un crimen, la mejor cosa que puedes hacer es llevar ese mercado alejado del elemento criminal. El mercado nunca se va a desvanecer, no puedes deshacerte del mercado. Pero lo que puedes hacer es llevarlo alejado del elemento criminal y traerlo a un negocio legítimo. Sabéis, la prohibición nos dio Al Capone en Chicago y nos ha dado... Y ahora nos ha dado la familia de la Cartilla de Familia en México, que han matado a 60,000 personas desde 2006. Y sabéis, los estimados sobre cuánto dinero gastan, cuánto dinero se deriva de las ventas de cannabis es del 20 al 60%. Así que, sabéis, los incentivos importan, y lo que pasa es que ahora mismo este mercado está financiando el mercado criminal. Y creo que deberíamos legalizar y regularlo y traer eso a un mercado legal. Realizo que estoy agotando el tiempo aquí, pero hemos tenido un gran éxito en reducir los daños de alcohol y tabaco. Hay ahora menos adolescentes que usan tabaco que usan cannabis porque es legal y regulado, y estamos educando a la gente sobre ello. También hemos reducido la cantidad de conducción alcohólica, la despesta de conducción alcohólica por 60% desde 1982. Así que estas son las cosas que surgen con las sustancias legalmente reguladas, mientras que estamos completamente fallando con el mercado ilegal de cannabis. Gracias.
Y ahora, hablando en contra de la reforma, es el jefe de la policía para... No, Jeff Rowland, Jeff Rowland, jefe adjunto.
He sido promovido.
Bien. Lo siento, Jeff, usted tiene nueve minutos, su tiempo empieza ahora.
Primero de todo, me gustaría agradecerles por todos los que vinieron. Nuestra vida en Estados Unidos de América, el país más grande y la cara de la tierra. Y podemos venir aquí y tener un espíritu de debate, y escuchar ambos lados y tomar una decisión. Hay muchos lugares en el mundo donde se puede hacer eso, así que gracias a todos por venir. En segundo lugar, no soy médico, no soy psiquiatra, soy policía oficial. Y he sido durante casi 30 años. Odio decir esto, pero entre los tres que estamos aquí, probablemente haya 90 años de experiencia en la fiscalización. No sé cómo nos volvimos viejos, pero lo hicimos. Algunas cosas que me gustaría decir, y ser honestos, por un show de manos, los apoyos de este movimiento en esta audiencia aquí esta noche, ¿hay algo que pueda decir o mostrar que cambiará su opinión? Por un show de manos, por favor, levanten la mano. Sigan orgullosos, tomen el cuidado de ser orgullosos de ello. Bien. Podemos debatir toda la noche. Pueden mirar las estadísticas. Pueden hacer que las estadísticas se vean de la manera que quieran que se vean. Pueden mirar estudios. Estudio tras estudio. Uno dirá que no hay daño, otro dirá que hay. No voy a entrar en eso. Los tres hombres en la fiscalización aquí podrían contarte historias que te apalparían sobre marihuana. Yo voy a abordar algunas de ellas. Ahora, sé que puede no aplicarse a las personas sentadas en esta habitación. Van a casa, viven en su casa con sus amigos, podrían decidir apartarse y fumar marihuana. Se ponen a hablar y dicen, esto es genial, no da daño a nadie. Y esto va a ser legalizado. Hay un lado oscuro, desafortunadamente, que tenemos que lidiar con. Algunas de esas llamadas que he trabajado durante años son homicidios directamente relacionados con la marihuana. Pueden decir, si legalizas esta sustancia, la criminalidad la quitará. No lo hará. Tienes que mirar una cosa. Cuesta dinero, no importa quién la esté vendiendo. La naturaleza adictiva en ella sigue allí. La homicida de la que hablamos fue una robo de un drogista. Él vendió marihuana. No era el tipo malo, era lo que eligió hacer. Los tres personas que entraron a su casa para robar su marihuana no tenían dinero. Querían su marihuana. Ese señor murió esa noche. Si la venden ilegal o legal, todavía cuesta dinero. La gente la tiene, se adicta a la sustancia. No pueden pagar la sustancia. Así que cambian a métodos como el que el señor a mi izquierda habló. Lo siento.
John?
John sí. Otro crimen se cometió debido a la adicción a la droga, en torno a la marihuana. De nuevo, las estadísticas, debemos debatir esas, sabéis, ambos lados. Hacemos llamadas de naturaleza donde pequeños infantes están caminando en la calle. Cuando encuentras a la residente, el padre se ha ido en el sillón. Durante la casa, es señal de uso de drogas. Bombas, rocas marihuana a la mitad, clipes, cosas así. La casa es apalabra. El niño está infestado con lice. No hay comida edible. Y sé que esto no es de todos, pero esta es la realidad de ello. Ahora, la legalización de eso no cambiará ese escenario. Y ese individuo va a tener problemas. Sus hijos serán quitados de ellos, ya sea legal o ilegal, porque no se preocupan por sus hijos. No creo que, cuando hablas de nuestros hijos usando esto, no creo que hacerlo más fácil y hacerlo legal va a de alguna manera cambiar esa realidad. Gracias por escucharme. Podría continuar y continuar, historia tras historia, como mis otros dos colegios están bien. Pero tienes que mirar esto como un todo. Cuando hablas de la fiscalización DWI y el éxito que tuvimos en eso, también tienes que ver que hemos reducido el nivel de BAC considerablemente. Cuando era el primer oficial de policía, era un 0.13. Luego pasó a un 0.12, luego a un 0.10, ahora estamos en un 0.08. Esos tienen consecuencias. Era más estricto. Las leyes estrictas tuvieron un efecto en ese problema. Así que la legalización de eso no va a resolver el lado oscuro de ello. Solo proliferará esos casos que he hablado de. Muchas gracias.
En el lado pro-reforma está el abogado local, abogado de defensa criminal, Dan Moore. Dan?
Bueno, generalmente se sienta abajo, así que me siento cómodo estando allí. Sabéis, he practicado la ley aquí por casi 40 años ahora. Y he representado a mucha gente con cargos de marihuana. Así que podría pensar que realmente no es mi mejor interés ser aquí y abogar que se haga legal. Esto va a sacar mucho dinero de mi bolsillo cuando lo pienso. Pero creo que el bien mayor es que estamos simplemente en el camino equivocado en esto, y lo hemos sido desde que se hizo ilegal en 1937. Solo hay dos formas de realmente cambiar las leyes. Una es por revolución y la otra es por evolución. Y no vamos a tomar armas y stormar la capital estatal, aunque en muchos casos pensé que eso hubiera sido una buena idea. Así que vas a tener que ir el otro camino. Y symposias como esta son la forma de hacerlo. El conocimiento es el poder, tienes que dar... Dejar a tus representantes electos... No, esa es la única forma en la que vas a tener una oportunidad. Aunque puedo deciros esto, he visto casos donde los juzgados han renunciado a la gente cuando obviamente eran culpables del crimen, cargado de posesión de marihuana. Eso se llama notificación del juez. Una vez que ves que eso empieza, es inevitable que el resultado sea si la legislatura lo quiere o no, la ley no va a... Solo no puede seguir, ¿vale? Ulysses Grant dijo, si quieres reproducir una mala ley, strictly enforce it. Y eso es lo que estamos haciendo. Cada parada de tráfico ahora resulta en que tu carro sea vigilado, que te quiten del carro, pateado, un maldito perro de drogas llamado allí para que puedan encontrar una semilla o una cebolla. Y ahora de repente, eso es otro ataque para el departamento de policía, el control de la carretera, si han hecho un crimen de drogas. Bueno, esas cosas tienen consecuencias. Si estás en el colegio, no puedes obtener un préstamo estudiantil. Si eres un agricultor, no puedes obtener préstamos de cultivo a través del gobierno. Si estás en el negocio, no puedes obtener un préstamo MBA, todo porque podrías haber tenido una joya. Así que, ¿quién está a favor de arruinar la vida de un estudiante de la escuela de 18 o 19 años por una joya? Pero eso es exactamente lo que estamos haciendo, y vamos a seguir haciéndolo hasta que la gente diga, hey, he tenido suficiente de esto. Lo que he notado en mi práctica legal es que generalmente todos están a favor de una fiscalización estricta, a menos y hasta que se trata de su hijo, su tía, su tío, su hermano. Hasta que la gente decide que, sabéis, tal vez esto no esté arruinando mi vida, pero el hijo de mi vecino de la próxima clase tuvo que salir de la universidad porque no podía obtener un préstamo estudiantil porque fue arrestado por o culpado de posesión de marihuana. Sabéis, cuando fui a la escuela en la década de 60 y la década de 70, y sabéis, todo el mundo fumaba cebollas, era así como era. No lo hago ahora, no abogué haciéndolo, no abogué fumando cigarros o realmente bebiendo whisky. Pero si quieres hacerlo, no creo que el gobierno debería estar evitando que lo hagas. Eso es solo un paso de decir, cuando vas a McDonald's, no, no puedes tener un Big Mac, estás sobrepeso, o hey, déjame tomar ese sal de ti. El gobierno no puede evitar que la gente se vuelva loca, por falta de un mejor término. Si quieres hacer algo que no está realmente en tu mejor interés y no da daño a nadie excepto a ti mismo, vaya y hazlo, no me importa. Si realmente estás hablando de... Si la fiscalización realmente quiere reducir, entonces necesitan conseguir a los bebes de whisky. Pregúntales, ¿cuántos asuntos de sal de whisky he ido a que la marihuana esté involucrada en? Hace 40 años, nunca defiendo uno. Defiendo cientos de asuntos de sal de whisky. Sin embargo, el whisky tiene una gran lobby, limpian los bosques de los políticos de Jefferson City y Washington DC. Así que el whisky solo fluye y da mil veces el daño. Nuestramente, una persona que alguna vez ODó de marihuana. ¡Mierda! No sucede. No hay razón lógica para esta ley, excepto que los políticos piensan que necesito ser duro con el crimen. Necesito subir la antea, hacer las leyes aún más estrictas. Hagan de la manera que sus derechos civiles... Sabéis cuánto sus derechos civiles se erosionan por las leyes de la fiscalización de drogas, golpear tu puerta, sacarte del carro, tener un perro barking y de repente decir, oh, eso es por la causa correcta, vamos a buscarlo. Y simplemente nos quedamos quietos y lo dejan pasar. Así que hasta que realmente empieces a tomar acción, a hacer algo al respecto, no, la maldita cosa va a cambiar, créeme. Este es el inicio de algo que puede ser bueno, no solo... Sabéis, como dije, no soy un fumador de marihuana, pero lo he sido durante años. Y si es legal, no voy a fumar, no voy a fumar cigarros. Pero si alguien más quiere hacerlo, no creo que el policía debería interferir con eso. Bueno, hasta Nixon, 1971, decidió que lo que ayudaría a su presidencia era declarar una guerra, una guerra contra las drogas. Hacemos todo el tiempo una guerra, guerra contra la pobreza, guerra contra las drogas, guerra contra esto, guerra contra aquello. Y estamos muy buenos en declararlo, pero no muy buenos en realmente luchar y ganar. Lo que hemos hecho, esto es lo que la guerra contra las drogas ha hecho. Encarcelamos a más gente que China. Y China tiene más de un millón de personas. Hasta ahora, solo hemos tenido, no sé si cuentas los delitos ilegales o no, pero aproximadamente 320 millones. Sin embargo, tenemos más gente en la prisión que China. Más del 50% de la gente en la prisión está allí por crímenes no violentos, principalmente posesión o fabricación de alguna droga. Así que, como dijo John, cuando empecé a practicar la ley, no tenían defensores públicos. Simplemente nombraban a ustedes, ustedes tienen que representar a Jones aquí, ¿qué hace? Tenían crímenes reales. Robó un carro, golpeó a alguien con un cuchillo. Robó el banco de Popper Bluff. Ahora, si vas a la Cámara de Ley Criminal en casi todas las ciudades, en la cumbre Butler también, el 70% de ellos, tal vez más que eso, son todos crímenes de drogas. La mayoría son solo un crimen de estado. Nos detuvimos a esta persona, tenía cinco milths de fármula de fármula en ella. Oh, eso es siete años en la penitenciaria. Nos detuvimos a este niño y tenía dos joyas. Oh, eso es un delito de clase B, 15 años en la penitenciaria porque es posesión con intención distribuida. Así que eso es lo que el sistema de justicia criminal ha convertido. Todo lo que estamos haciendo es tomar a un niño que podemos enviar a, por Dios, una escuela de Harvard por menos de lo que estamos pagando para que lo mantenga en la penitenciaria porque fumó una joya. Así que, y estos tipos en el departamento de policía, quiero decir, son amigos míos, vaya. Danny Whiteley fue una de las primeras personas que conocí casi 40 años atrás cuando me mudé aquí a Popper Bluff. Y yo, sabéis, son oficiales de la fiscalización. Están jurados para mantener y cumplir la ley. No pueden decir, bueno, no nos gusta esa ley, no la vamos a cumplir. No, tienen que hacerlo, realmente no tienen ninguna opción sobre eso. They don't really have any choice about it. But you people do have a choice, and you can contact your congressman, your state representatives, and you can really make a difference. Now, if we all just sit around here on our asses and don't do anything about it, then this has been a complete waste of everybody's time and effort. So, what I would hope this would be, would be something that would spur everybody on, regardless of what your position is. Take stand, and, you know, make your voices heard. Thanks.
Well, you've got to admit, Dan is a colorful orator, isn't he? Good job. Very, very good. Chief, are you up, or Kevin? Kevin Glazer, Kevin, we're glad to have you. No, no, it's Kevin Glazer, I believe it. Kevin?
Thank you. I'll start out by saying, I've been a narcotics investigator. That's been my primary function for the last about twenty-three years. Been in law enforcement about thirty-four, but I've done nothing but narcotics investigations for about the last twenty-three. And I will sit here and I will tell you that I am not in absolute total opposition to everything that Show Me Cannabis is presenting, and some of their ideas. I am not in favor of total legalization. I think that's the wrong way to go. But they do have some valid points, and I think law enforcement, for one, has to make some changes in the future on this issue. I don't think marijuana should be a Schedule I drug. I don't think that a person should pay the price for smoking some pot when he's sixteen, seventeen years old for the rest of his life. There are some changes that need to be made. And it's going to be a little bit of a challenge, but I truly think organizations like Normal and Show Me Cannabis could make better progress by addressing some of those key issues that they will find a lot of people in law enforcement agree with. It's just not right to penalize somebody and keep them from maybe going to college. That's not productive. But the legalization issue is totally different. I also believe there are some very, very good issues regarding medical marijuana. If a person is terminally ill, they've got cancer, they've got legitimate traumatic-type illnesses, and marijuana is the best way to help them, I'm all for it. The problem with this, though, is the abuse that these medical marijuana dispensaries are involved with. And when you look at the percentage of people that go there and obtain marijuana that don't have critical illnesses. They've got sprained ankles, they've got ingrown toenails, they've got bad backs. That's not what the medical marijuana issue's about. It's for those people that truly need it, and they are just a very, very small percentage of the ones who are actually obtaining the drugs and the prescriptions. So, there's issues with that. That needs to be looked at, and changes need to be made. A couple other issues with the legalization side, they're talking about tax revenues. You can look at tax revenues on alcohol, you can look at tax revenues on tobacco. And they bring in a lot of money. But the cost of those two products by themselves, tobacco and alcohol, do not outweigh the profits that are generated through revenue. And it's not going to be any different with marijuana taxation either. When you look at the health issues associated with people smoking long-term, the health effects on that side, it's going to be the same thing. It's going to far outweigh the benefits of it, of the revenue that's coming in. So, I don't think that really holds water very well. They're talking about how it's going to put the drug cartels out of business. Folks, it will not. The drug cartels in Mexico make twenty-five percent of their overall profits, which is in the billions of dollars, through marijuana distribution. Now, do you think they're just going to walk away from that twenty-five percent if it's legal here in the United States? Those cartels will get involved in the distribution efforts up here in this country. They're doing it already. You know, so that's, it's not going to get rid of them. It's going to be more inclined to bring them and make them more active here in the United States. So, that's, those are issues we've got to look at. You know, it's just not all cut and dry. It's a very passionate topic of conversation. People are very set in their ways. And again, I think those of you that are probably pro-legalizers will not, we're not going to change your mind tonight. It's not going to happen. But what we have to do is, we have to look at what are going to be the long-term effects if we do, if we go this route. If we legalize marijuana in Missouri, is, you think it's going to have a, an impact on our kids? Are we going to, are our kids going to start using marijuana more than they do now? You know, I'm saying, one thing I think we need to do is kind of hold up a little bit on this, everybody wanting to get on the bandwagon and legalize. It's been done in Colorado. It's been done in the state of Washington. Let's see what happens out there. You know, in a very brief period of time, in less than a year, we're seeing the number-one expulsion rate for high school students is marijuana possession. Those numbers are going up. We're seeing an increase in the number of drug-related fatality accidents in Colorado and Washington. You know, so, let's just go all of a sudden saying, "Yeah, legalization's the way to go." There can be some very, very detrimental effects to doing that. We've got two states in our country that are doing it, and I think we ought to sit back and watch them and see what happens. And maybe, maybe they can work some of these issues out. Maybe the tax revenues will come in. Maybe they can get control on that. But maybe not. You know, and what are we going to do about the availability of the marijuana to our kids? Is that a concern of anybody's? You know, it is of mine. And again, I'm not, I'm not one of these guys, if somebody wants to smoke a joint in the privacy of their home, I don't care. As a narcotics investigator with the CMO Drug Task Force for about twenty-two years, we didn't prioritize pot smoking. We went after drug dealers. That's what we did. And a lot of times, we might be going after a cocaine dealer, we might be going after a heroin dealer, we might be going after a methamphetamine dealer. We hit the house, we don't come up with much on that because they can get rid of that stuff pretty quick. A lot of times, the only thing we will come up with is a marijuana arrest. That might be one of the reasons why some of the statistics that Mr. Payne was talking about are the way they are. You know, that's just, that's the nature of the beast in narcotics investigations. Man, I will tell you this, a lot of people will talk about whether marijuana's a gateway drug or not. You know, a lot of debate about that. I will tell you this, in my twenty-five years-plus work in narcotics, heroin dealers, cocaine dealers, methamphetamine dealers, I've never met a single person that dealt in any of those drugs that didn't start out or continue smoking marijuana. Now, that doesn't mean everybody that smokes marijuana is going to go to cocaine, methamphetamine, and heroin. I'm not saying that. But for a large percentage of people, it is a transition drug. They'll start with the marijuana, and then we'll get into these harder. That's, that's just facts, that's what happens. You know, again, there's a lot of marijuana dealers or people that smoke marijuana that don't go that route. You know, my hat's off to you for staying with something less serious. But it happens, you know? And I'm here to tell you, we do not send people to prison for a joint. It does not happen in this day and age. Some of the statistics about a person going to prison for life for marijuana, I'm not sure how much the quantities were, but I guarantee you, they had to be major traffickers to get a life sentence for marijuana. We do not send people to prison for a joint. It doesn't happen. And we haven't totally decriminalized it in our judicial system, but the penalties are not near what they used to be. But at the same time, I'll go back to what I said earlier. A person should not be penalized when they're in possession of a joint for the rest of their life. We need to make some changes with that. We need to make some changes in the scheduling of marijuana. And there, I would like to see Show Me Cannabis, Normal, some of these other organizations really put some effort towards that versus the legalization. Thank you.
And we have from Ozark tonight, a former medical marijuana patient, Darrell Bertrand. Darrell, welcome to Three Rivers College. I'm glad to have you on the panel.
Hello, everyone. My name is Darrell Bertrand. I am the former owner of Ozark Mountain Playgrounds, a residential and commercial playground company with over six hundred and fifty successful installations in the region and a yearly sales between two hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand a year. I'm going to tell you how I know firsthand how cannabis saved my life and how prohibition has ruined it. Then, at the end, I'm going to throw you just a few facts. Around 2003, I was diagnosed with degenerative disc disease, spondyolysis of the spine, and spinal stenosis with a thirteen-millimeter gap in my spine that would move around. Upon my diagnosis, doctors prescribed me painkillers and muscle relaxers of all sizes and colors to deal with the pain, as you can imagine. Within the subsequent eighteen months of my diagnosis, I had endured liver failure multiple times that nearly killed me. Both with hospital stays of more than five days, the doctors attributed my liver failure to the medicine I was being prescribed. After my second liver failure, I knew my options were very limited. I sought advice from a local chiropractor and a family member who lives out west and is epileptic. He lives seizure-free in a medical marijuana state. I traveled out west and returned with seeds of a specific strains of cannabis to treat my pain. I grew my own medical cannabis for several years, and along with chiropractic care, I was able to work, grow a successful business, and be a productive member of society. In July 2008, I had a bad slip-and-fall accident and broke my back. My L4 crushed and almost disintegrated my L5. My L4 was literally sitting on my S1 and could clearly be seen nearly protruding out my lower back. You can say pretty easily at that point, my consumption of cannabis increased greatly from what it was. I want to make it clear, I did not hide my cannabis use from my doctors. I don't suggest that anyone ever does. If your doctor is against it, then go find another doctor. The doctors were concerned with how I was consuming it due to the surgical procedure I was about to undertake. They were very much relieved and happy to know I was using a vaporizer. In April of 2009, I was finally able to have a spinal fusion surgery to fix my back. It failed within a week, and I had to have a second emergency spinal fusion, two weeks later. Now, I have twelve screws, two rods, and a plate in my back, and I've had to have a further third surgery to remove some hardware that started to protrude and come out. Subsequently, I had gotten a virus on my PC. I had used PC outlet in Ozark for years for all my computer work. The store sent the photos from, actually, I messed up here. At some point during my time of being a producer of medical marijuana for myself, I took a few pictures of my grow to show a few family members. I deleted those pictures, but unless you clean your hard drive, they are still there. Subsequently, I had gotten a virus on my PC. I had used PC outlet in Ozark for years for all my computer work. The store sent the photos from my hard drive to the local police drug task force. There were no identifiable markings of any type in these photos to distinguish a location, it could have been anywhere. They investigated me for several months, found nothing following the virus, and never got the evidence to get a warrant until my vaporizer broke and I began rolling joints. I threw out an empty pack of zigzags in my trash. Apparently, they had been searching my trash weekly for a while without my knowledge. The judge finally gave them the search warrant, and the rest is history. The raid occurred four days after my discharge from the hospital on my second spinal fusion, I had a SWAT team kicking down the door. During the raid, it was clearly evident, once they found the garden, that they were only concerned about seizing cash funds from the sales of cannabis. They used extremely abusive language and threats of destroying everything if I didn't hand over thirty thousand in cash they were looking for. For some reason, they were stuck on a specific amount of cash, guys. Since there was only about three hundred dollars in cash between me and my wife, and after thirty minutes of talking to them, it became clear to them that it was actually a medical grow, and according to them, the first one they had ever seen. Needless to say, they were extremely upset that it wasn't a recreational-for-sale grow operation. Since I didn't have the cash they wanted, and they went on a media smear campaign against me and my business, that my business was just a front for a medical grow operation and that we didn't sell or install anything. If you came in the front door, you were there to buy marijuana, and I would sell to anyone over the counter. This story was the headline news story on all networks in Springfield area for three days in all time slots. When they dropped the distribution charges against me, do you think they publicly announced it? Hell, no. Before the bust, we had a nice average home. We rented in a very nice neighborhood, where my kids could go out and play. I owned my dream truck and had some nice possessions. We tried to keep the business going, but all attempts failed. We changed the name and moved the business. It just didn't work, guys, everything failed. We now live in a low-income neighborhood that in the last year, within a few houses of me or right across the street, has had a stabbing, two overdoses, an attempted murder, and a game fight. Needless to say, my kids don't go out and play anymore. Additionally, I was told by several lawyers, if I had twenty-five thousand, I would walk and not be a felon. So, the saying goes, "If you have the money and do the crime, you won't do the time." Since my plea deal and my wife's, I am now disabled and unable to work. It has taken my wife almost two years to find a minimum-wage-paying job with her college degree through a temp service. The conviction has made us and labeled us as a different class of citizen. My choice for using cannabis wasn't something I did for pleasure. It was necessary for me to live a somewhat pain-free life, and without it, prescription pain meds would have surely killed me. Additionally, my wife doesn't smoke cannabis, and had never even been in my grow room. But for some reason, they found it necessary to charge her harder than me. It is clear now that the raid was asset forfeiture-based because I am almost positive, if I had been selling and had the money they wanted, my wife would have never been charged. Finally, when I signed my plea deal of production of a controlled substance, if I had knew then what I know now, I would have never signed a plea deal. I would have gone to trial and used a personal rights defense along with jury nullification. Also, my plea said nothing in it about me losing my rights to free speech. I may have lost my right to bear arms, and I suffer daily in this cold from cruel and unusual punishment as I am in continuous pain and unable to take anything to relieve that pain. If I take Big Pharma, I could die. I could take a natural harmless alternative called cannabis, but then the state of Missouri would send me to jail for eight years. I am not a criminal, no matter what label the prohibition is put on me. There are thousands more like me here in Missouri, if not more. There are over a hundred and nineteen million in the US that use cannabis, for whichever reason they choose. Do you really think that any government can stop a hundred and nineteen million people from doing something freely? In what is supposed to be the land of the free, tax and regulate cannabis. As it has never killed anyone, prohibition and the war on drugs has killed too many and needs to stop. It is a war that no one can win. In conclusion, I would like to add that the prohibition of marijuana has been sold to the citizens of the United States as a big, fat lie. Just look at who and how it became prohibited back in the 1930s. Who would want themselves associated with that racist and greedy behavior? We all know that what happened then couldn't happen now with our current structure of government. Here are a few scientific facts in closing. First, the prohibitionists will tell you marijuana is a gateway drug. The truth is, every study on this theory done since 1972 has shown that to be a myth and just a theory. Secondly, they will tell you it has no medical value whatsoever. But did you know, since 2003, the US Department of Health has held several patents on medical marijuana and its benefits? But yet, the DEA, a police unit, tells the doctors they are wrong and label it as a Schedule I drug. And finally, they will tell you teen use will increase. The truth is, under prohibition, the dealer does not ID. Teens see they can get marijuana easier than alcohol and tobacco that are regulated. Furthermore, and I also know this firsthand from my daughters in school, furthermore, in the states where cannabis is legal medically or recreational, according to the CDC, the state leading in the decline of teen use is the state of Colorado as of 2012. This is a study based past year. I could go on and on all night, and we can refute any argument brought on by the prohibitionists with science. If I were to use the science, cannabis would not be a Schedule I drug, and it would be legal nationwide. I want to thank John Payne and Show Me Cannabis Regulation for having me tonight. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Darrell. Thank you for being here tonight. And now, our Popper Bluff, Chief of Police, Chief Danny White.
Since I might be the oldest or one of the oldest people in here tonight, you just have to bear with me that I might add Danny Moore not too far behind me. I realize some of my comments and opinions started to apply way before many, actually, most of you here tonight. most of you here tonight were ever thought of or much less born. Now, the one thing that we can be thankful for tonight is the fact that we can still, at this point in history, all come together, agree to disagree, even vehemently at times, but feel free to do so without retaliation. Even though I may never remotely agree with you, I will always defend our rights to express our opinions. After being able to pain, I started gathering statistics and material that I thought should legitimize or corroborate my beliefs and opinions, such as marijuana is linked to respiratory problems and cancer, just like tobacco. Marijuana affects alertness, concentration, perception, coordination, and reaction time. A 2010 North Dakota State University study revealed marijuana users reported twice as many incidents as non-users of driving under the influence, missing a class, experiencing memory loss, getting hurt or injured, getting into a fight or argument, and performing poorly on a test. But Mr. Payne and his supporters are going to produce opposing research from other academia that totally is opposite of that. At this point, it just becomes a case of who is the best salesman. I might add that Mr. Moore over here and I have, like he said, a forty-year history, long-going differences in opinions on too many subjects to discuss, but we had time sit here for three days. But I can tell you, you can blame him for making law enforcement officers in this area better at our jobs, because his tenacity and work ethic has made us very aware of dotting our i's and crossing our t's. With the 1960s and the birth of the so-called flower power generation, we have seen slow and steady destruction and degradation of the United States. It all started with a slogan, "Never trust anybody over thirty," and then transitioned into an organized effort to destroy the very fabric that made this country the shining city on the mound that President Reagan once spoke about. Let's look at some of what I call a flower power feel-good generation has brought us. Everyone should be equal, and you cannot judge people on their academic or athletic performance. After all, it's not their fault. They are not as innovative or smart as Sam Walton or as fast as Dion Sanders. You should not keep scoring a little bit in baseball game, because we don't want someone realizing they're either the winner or the loser. Judges are not the problem, people who oppose them are. We need to take God out of our schools and public opinion, because it does not fit their view of the world, or it might offend an atheist or an Islamic terrorist. We cannot say the pledge of allegiance in our schools, because we don't want to offend anyone, even if they are here illegally or they support Al Qaeda. The traditional two-parent family is an outdated idea whose time has passed. The divorce rate in the 1960s was about 2.2%, but according to the American Psychological Association, that figure today is between 45 and 50%. Teen pregnancy is not the problem. We just need the government to fund a program that takes care of the mother and the child. Education standards are too high. We need to concentrate more on the child's feelings or ego instead of their skills in math, reading, and science proficiency. So now let's look at some of the results of these efforts. We now have more children armed to single parents than married couples. The nation's divorce rate is at an all-time high. Children living in poverty is at an all-time high. Social programs like food stamps and WIC funding are at record levels. Christianity and former religion is now taboo, and lawsuits are frequently filed to prevent traditional Christian celebrations like Christmas. Our nation's flags have been removed from warehouses and city hall chambers across the country because someone viewed it as offensive. Today's military may be at an all-time low in preparedness because of the feel-good generation, who also referred to a mass murderer and terrorist, a U.S. military installation, as workplace violence. Drug addiction has steadily risen, and we have seen epidemics of cocaine, crack cocaine, methamphetamine, heroin, prescription diversion, and so-called synthetic drugs like bath salts. Many of our inner-city populations such as Chicago, Detroit, Los Angeles, even St. Louis have been destroyed because of the drug addiction, gangs, and violent crime. But a lot of these people are the same ones who support taking our Second Amendment rights away. I believe we are the biggest crossroads in the United States' history. I submit that we need to abandon the everyone-feel-good philosophy perpetuated by the flower power generation. I can state for a fact, I'm tougher, faster, and smarter than some of you in here tonight. But I can also say, I'm weaker, slower, and dumber than some of you in here tonight. The difference is knowing and accepting that as a part of life, because God made us that way. We have to return to the conservative principles that brought us the Industrial Revolution, helped us lead the world in manufacturing productivity, and space exploration, brought us miraculous mental discoveries, and the highest standard of living to date in the entire world. We're now a nation of unsustainable debt, and I want to leave the world on how much we can borrow. Christianity, family values, and patriotism may also be at an all-time low. We have a Marine that's being buried tomorrow here in Poper Bluff. This is Donald Reback from St. Louis right now. We're having to deal with an organization called Westwood Baptist Church, Westboro, whatever it is. I can sit on trailers. I'm on track. Hydrocodone, Oxycontin, Xanax, soma are all so-called legal drugs, but we lead thirteen counties in southeast Missouri by huge margins in prescriptions written, prescription diversion, prescription addiction, and prescription deaths. The majority of them are paid for by many of the working, tax-paying citizens that are here tonight. I personally believe legalizing marijuana, cocaine, heroin, or meth is not a path to success. It just perpetuates and follows the same feel-good policy that has gotten us to the point I think we are today. I respectfully say thank you for having me, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief Blackley. And our final presenter here on the panel tonight is Dr. Gil Mowley of Springfield, Missouri, who has also practiced in the state of Washington. Dr. Mowley, welcome to Three Rivers.
Thank you. If I could have someone from this side of the auditorium, from this side of the auditorium, circulate these this way. They're pamphlets of research literature. You've heard opinions. This is research. You have law enforcement with opinions. I'm a scientist here tonight. I'm a medical doctor. I have twenty-five years, board it, certified in emergency medicine, practicing in Springfield, Missouri. I also have a license in Washington State where I read the medical cannabis authorization. I've testified in three states, from Washington to Colorado to Missouri, about the legalization, not only of marijuana, but also of medical. I'm a medical review officer. I interpret drug screens for the workplace, and I'm on the point and the cutting edge changing workplace drug-free policies to impairment screening and not lifestyle. What we're looking for, active THC, not something that's been hanging for six weeks. In seven minutes here tonight, in nine minutes at this point, I have a top-ten myth that our opponents are most likely to mention to discredit our efforts to legalize and regulate cannabis. Myth number one, cannabis is a gateway drug. It is not, and the research is clear. The only strong correlations we picked up on leading to harder drug use are antisocial personal traits as delinquency and deviancy. That is in the green literature that you have circulating, and I'll kindly forward this to the right for our doubters, science. Particularly for cannabis, exposure to the black market where harder drugs are readily available poses a much more likely cause of drug possession, gentlemen, and I think you know that. Myth number two, marijuana is a risky drug. Now, while this isn't a total myth, because cannabis can cause some memory problems, it can trash the lungs, and cause addiction, and ten percent of users, it is a lot safer than alcohol. No one, as was mentioned, ever drinks alcohol, and THC overdose. You can't say that about Tom and Al, Advil, or any of the cold medicines on the drugstore aisle. Cannabis is safer than alcohol. That's been the prevailing medical opinion for a couple of decades now. Please review in your packet the yellow literature from Lancet, one of the world's most respected medical journals. That's on Yellow Paper. JAMA, Journal of Medical Society Association, has a similar article concerning the long-term effects of alcohol on society and the body compared with the long-term effects of cannabis on society and the body. In hands-down, ten to one, alcohol is worse on both of course. With this in mind, let's revisit the gateway myth. For teenagers, gentlemen, the corollary of adults is eroded when dangers of gateway drugs are exaggerated and made, leading them to think that everything, that all drug messages are nonsense. It's like, huh, they lied to us about cannabis, so they probably lied to us about K2 and bath salts. They're probably lied to us about cocaine and meth, too. Sergeant Gelmer, I heard your debate last month. I've heard it all over Missouri. I hope you're listening via internet, and I hope you're getting well, sir. But yes, sir, cannabis is a gateway drug, thanks only to the misinformation you are spreading about it. Myth number three, there are more carcinogens in cannabis smoke than tobacco smoke. The truth is, there's absolutely no correlation or causal event from smoking cannabis and lung cancer. It even appears that THC guards against carcinogens in cannabis smoke from causing cancer. I had a hard time grasping that, thinking it's just stoner rhetoric, but it is true according to the research we're seeing. I'll pass that around. This is on the blue stuff, ladies and gentlemen. Myth number four, traffic fatalities with cannabis present in the blood. Would hundreds of percent in Colorado, would Colorado legalize medical cannabis? Folks, they're counting drivers with residual THC and it's metabolizing the system that can linger for a month and a half after use, and it's a medical fact that the effects of cannabis last two to three hours. Here are a couple of front-page articles over the past few months. One from the Boston Globe, talk about Massachusetts. The other, from the New York Times, talking about California. And reading about this brand-new research, it says, "A team of economists who specialize in the health risk behaviors looked at the link between marijuana laws and traffic deaths, and on average, after medical, that they dropped eight to eleven percent in their first year. Five years out, the results also had that same correlation." The fourth dish over to you as well, gentlemen, it's on the white, she's right there. A little bit out of order. The next one, myth number five, cannabis is different from alcohol, because people use alcohol for the taste and cannabis to get high. I've got news for you, gentlemen. I heard Groh say that last week. Most folks drink alcohol for the buzz and not the taste. I simply bring this up to show the audience how well-grounded or not our opposition may or may not be. Myth number six, there's no such thing as medical marijuana, Groh said last week. He may say to you next weekend in St. Louis, John. A tipping point, ladies and gentlemen, has finally been reached in modern medicine that we can no longer deny the usefulness of cannabis and wide range of maladies, and thank you, Officer Glasser, for recognizing that. The science is sound. It stops seizures that anticonvulsants can't touch. It repairs neurons and MS, and its anti-inflammatory effects are remarkable. The list of scientifically validated medical uses for cannabis goes on and on, and as a medical doctor licensed to practice in Washington State, I've done my share of authorizations, and I'm telling you, it works. While the rules of medicine don't argue with success, and it works amazingly so. Now, sure, not all the patients are legitimate, but all these patients die from hydrocodone and Oxycontin overdoses are not legitimate, too. Perhaps then, gentlemen, following your reasoning, let's make those illegal as well. Number seven, well, and all the officers throughout the nation, regardless of where I testify, I'd like to have the same bullet points. Cannabis drops IQ. This was suggested and debunked. Take a look at the orange, things going around. And besides, no one's here suggesting cannabis for kids. As a matter of fact, I led the opposition in Washington State against legalization, because it wasn't strong enough to protect the kids and deter education. It's right here, argument against melvin, six-point-four homes, the Attorney General approved the lawyers that I wrote. So, yes, I am for legalization, but within reason and regulation, and as John knows, I'll be the first one to sign up for the PAC before law enforcement. I will lead law enforcement to oppose it if you don't protect the children. No one's protecting, suggesting growing the IQ of kids. That's debunked. Next, cannabis causes schizophrenia. It doesn't. It can tip a person to exacerbation, but more likely helps will leave the symptoms. See the articles in purple. Number nine, cannabis is addictive. And again, this is a partial truth. It's addictive in ten percent of the users. It's a psychological dependency and not a physical addiction. The withdrawal is irritability and subversiveness, not seizures and physical like alcohol and every single other drug. But it is addictive to some people, so let's quickly review the tenets of addiction. A craving when the stimulus is gone, a continuation despite negative consequences, and a compulsion. Well, these are components of addiction to cannabis that I've seen in patients, but you know what? In my life, TV's an addiction. That morning jail with Mika, I gotta catch it. I crave it when she's not there. Shopping, playing with my dogs, sex with my partner. Well, you know, I continue it despite negative consequences. I play for work, I play, okay, et cetera. All right, so, you know, let's put these things in perspective. Number ten, if you legalize cannabis, DUIs are going to be as bad as DUIs from alcohol. Now, here, no one should drive within a few hours of smoking cannabis, because it does interfere with concentration and psychomotor performance. But the impairment you get isn't anything like the impairment from alcohol because of the concurrent mental effects of the drugs. While alcohol decreases inhibitions and reasoning, making drivers speed and take chances and poor decisions, on the contrary, it's true with cannabis. They get a little paranoid. Suddenly, everybody car is a cop car. They drive ten miles to all speed limit. This is a stoner report out, and guys, no. All right, looks like we got a finish here. How about a few bonus myths here, okay? Bonus myth, is it against the law of cannabis to legalize cannabis? Wrong, Officer Groh. The Fed said it was cool for Washington and Colorado. And one final thing here, since we have another moment here, I want to talk about the difference in correlation and association and causation. You know, you say that the mother with the kid running out on the block because you had a joint on the kitchen table, or it was a causation. Well, you know, if you pull somebody over for expired tags, chances are, they have oil that needs to be changed and low tires. But did the low tires, the oil change, cause the tags expire? No, that's dissociation. When Groh says you find marijuana at meth labs, one left and the other, that's dissociation. That's not a cause. Gentlemen, you're telling your opinions, but not changing science.
Dr. Gilroy, would you like to express your opinion at this time?
Yes, sir.
Anyway, we want to welcome you from Springfield, all of you on the panel tonight. Well, we've heard the pros and cons, and the good and the bad, and we appreciate the diverse opinions that we've heard tonight. We appreciate this wonderful group of professionals, and it's now time for question and answer. Let me just say, we're not looking for your opinion. We're not looking for a statement from you, but we are looking for a question that you might want to ask this panel as a group or an individual member of this panel. So we'll open up this town hall meeting. If you have a question, you need to come down front to this podium, get on the mic. I believe we are streaming live, so we want to make sure that we do this as good as we possibly can here. We have a question. Please state your name, where you're from.
My name's Elvin Orr, I'm Louisiana originally.
Louisiana?
Yes, sir. The thing that instructs me most about this meeting is the injustice that was done to Nara here. I want to know what you, law enforcement people, feel about that. I think it's important for us all to realize we're all people, and we ought to have feelings that are pretty similar. I'd like to know what you feel about what was done to Jeff Nara here.
You know, when I hear abuses in the criminal justice system, or I hear about police officers stepping over the line, or whatever the accusations might be, the one thing I have always found is that there are two sides to every story. You know, sometimes when the police come out with their side, you find out, well, that's not exactly what happened. You know, but at the same time, when you hear another person make accusations, there's always two sides. I know nothing about the case, given the facts as he stated them, and I don't dispute what he said, but I would certainly, before I pass judgment on either party, I'd like to know more about the investigation, what happened, what transpired, you know? Because police officers do things that step over the line. I'm not denying that. You read about them every day, all over the country. It happens, and it's a shame that it does, but it does. And I will tell you, I'll kind of back up what Chief Lightly says. When you have attorneys, defense attorneys like Danny Moore over here, for example, you don't get away with that crap here. That's, you know, you're called on the carpet if you do, if you step over that line. So now, if there weren't any repercussions on the law enforcement agencies in regard to his investigation, you know, it just may, it may seem like a huge injustice, you know? But the fact remains, we do have laws that tell us what we have to do, you know? And again, growing marijuana is a serious crime, and we have to deal with that as law enforcement officers until they change the law. And like I said before, it- And like I said before, I don't believe it should be a Schedule 1 drug. And I believe there should be exceptions for people with medical issues. I think there's a lot of good coming from marijuana on that standpoint. A lot of research needs to be done. Uh, you know, so, yeah, I, I, you know, my heart goes out to the problems he had. And, and again, but there, there, I'm telling you, there's always two sides to every story. And, and I, before I pass judgment on anybody, I'd like to have all the facts from the other side too. No, they're not, they're not. So I really can't go much further than that.
Any other response from law enforcement on the panel? Okay, thank you, Elvin.
Can I say something real quick about that? Uh, I, I do just want to say that, you know, I think, uh, law enforcement is put in a tough position by this, that even if they do, you know, like, uh, Glazer said, that if, uh, he supports the idea of medical cannabis, uh, for some patients, but, you know, the law is the law. And so the real key thing is, it's not that these guys are bad, it's that the law is bad. Uh, and so the law is an error here, and we need to change that. And I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. If you will give us your name and tell us where you're from.
My name is Samantha Stafford, and I live in Duncan. I just wanted to kind of get the story. I have a good friend that has bipolar disorder and has children. And, um, he, he smokes cannabis, and, um, I have seen, they put him on some medicine, you know, to try to kind of counteract his bipolar disorder. And I have seen him at times when he's been on his medicine, especially first thing in the morning, wake up so groggy, can't even stand up, function, anything. And they tried him on different doses and different medicines, but when he's on cannabis, smoking cannabis, he's not like that. He doesn't act all groggy. He's not, he can't take care of his children, you know? He doesn't, you know? And I just think it would be a good thing. It's a lot, I think it's a lot better for somebody to smoke cannabis than to take pain pills or something that's gonna make them to where they can't take care of their children. Or they're trying to drive a car and wrecking other people, you know?
So what's your question?
Uh, I'm just saying that, I just want to let them know that, you know, I think that it's, it's good for health reasons, you know? Personally, I don't smoke, but I see that it does help my, my friend out, and, you know, I, I think that it should, should be legal for health reasons.
Thank you. Keep in mind, we've established this particular part of this town hall meeting for questions and answers, not opinions. So if you have a question and answer, you're welcome to come to the podium and address it. Thank you, sir, welcome. Name and where you're from.
David, welcome, please. My question, and I don't care who answers it, is there a legal way to test if someone has used marijuana while they are operating a motor vehicle?
Dr. Gilroy? When someone uses cannabis, there'll be an active metabolite that will remain cycloactive for three to four hours, and an inactive metabolite that can last for a day to six weeks later. That'd be carboxy THC. Now, on chronic regular users, that's somebody that would, uh, smoke maybe once a day, um, their levels, their active levels would never fall probably below five nanograms even after several days of abstinence. So in answer to your question, because, uh, the regular chronic users of cannabis will sometimes, uh, have, uh, active THC in their system up to 30 days of total sustained abstinence. No, there's no way that you can appropriately or adequately label someone's time in which they use cannabis. But you can do some ratios with how much carboxy, if you have a whole bunch of carboxy, they're probably a chronic user, and probably not that impaired at such and such a level. But that's one of the big things about DUI, it's absolutely impossible to rate impairment with any number of impairment. You can have people impaired with three nanograms of active THC in their blood, and people with 140 nanograms, stoned, cold sober as you and I are right now. It's all over the board. The novice will be stoned at three, and the, and the experienced worker will just fine at 120 nanograms. Google my name, you'll see some of the studies.
State your name and where you're from, please, sir.
My name is David Patterson, Watford Lake. 53-year-old, he won't be the actor, I don't know what that is, I have a eating disorder. And when I was little, my joints were the size of softball. I hurt every day of my week. This morning, I woke up, uh, my ball, my joint hurt, my hands are now, I'm sorry, but, uh, you know, no, indeed, doesn't, I took a pill, like you're talking about. I've got a bad liver. I mean, I can eat five bean pills in a minute, perfectly. But if I get morning, I smoke just a little bit. I don't drive or smoke. I don't drink no more. I drink quite some time. I'm as drunk as I can before I smoke. But anyway, it takes care of pain, and there's not no pain pill I can take that works that quick or wake up middle of the night hurting. You take a sleep pill at 3:00 in the morning, you can wake up so drunk in the morning, you can't get up out of bed. But I can smoke just a little bit, it's good stuff, and go back to sleep. I don't wake up, my joints swell, so I have ventilation, I got arthritis in my body. I had arthritis all my life. And, uh, it just takes care of pain, and there are bad things about it. I don't believe parents smoked it, they drank. My father was in that call, and he'd come in, fight every day, not hiding, bed, tie away from me. And I'm not alone with that, you know? We've seen it, y'all seen it, how they, police officers, seen husband, wife, fight, drunk, over something stupid. Had a friend who almost killed his wife one time, didn't get drunk. But I never seen anybody high, go in, wanna kill somebody, they were stoned. Meth heads, I could keep them all out the front door, and this buys them. I mean, I've tried drugs all my life, I've tried different things in the past when I was a teenager. But the thing is, it keeps me from hurting. If I grow it, I get in trouble. You buy it, you get in trouble. If you buy it, then you're too big for them. Terrorism. But if you grow it yourself, who's up to it? It's making money off of nobody. So if I want to grow a few plants in my house, you charge me the money. You know, a plant can grow a taxidermy, dude? You know, he got to grow a bunch of plants. And you can cut the plant off and restart it again. And so there's, now there's pros and cons against everything. You're already, or a hundred years, I actually grow all night long, you're already about it.
So David, David, tell me, what is your question to the panel today?
I don't see why some of us that do need it have to pay, take a chance to get in trouble or something that maybe does not hurt.
Somebody want to answer or make a comment about that?
See, I think this gentleman brings a very good point that I'd like to show the candidates to try to address. Uh, with the legalization of medical marijuana, um, with the legalization, are individuals like this gentleman, maybe have a grow in the backyard, in his house, or how exactly does that all wash out when we talk about legalization?
Sure. I mean, it, it really depends on how, how an initiative is drafted. Uh, you know, we turned in, uh, 10 initiatives with the Secretary of State last week, uh, and one of them has, uh, no home growing allowed, one of them has a four plant limit, one of them has a six plant limit, and one of them has an eight plant limit. Uh, and those are, there are some other parameters as well that sort of raise the numbers of initiatives that we actually turned in. But, yeah, so I mean, uh, I think we would prefer, I think cannabis would prefer that people would be allowed to grow, uh, some on their own. And I think, uh, you know, it's, uh, I know that some people, they, they, it's, uh, it looks good. I mean, a lot of people, uh, who have said, well, we need to, they're worried now about, you know, big business in cannabis. Well, uh, if people are allowed to grow, that does limit the amount of, uh, of marijuana that has to be bought on the open market. Uh, and I mean, it's a not terribly easy plant to grow, but it's also not, uh, not that terribly complicated. So, uh, it's, it could be grown in someone's backyard. The key thing, uh, the legislature would be allowed under any of those proposals to limit any, uh, it wouldn't be allowed to be in the public if the legislature doesn't want it to be. So you could grow it in your backyard, but you couldn't grow it in your front yard, basically.
Thank you. All right? Follow up, great.
An individual not following those guidelines, what would be the process for that?
I can't remember the exact details on how it all works right now, but I believe that it's the first offense would be, uh, nothing more than an infraction. Second offense could be a misdemeanor, anything act, that could be felony. Uh, so I mean, yes, it, it could be if you're growing over the limits, especially if you're growing over limits and growing large amounts, it's clear you're basically, you're not doing this for personal use, that you are producing for the commercial market and avoiding, avoiding taxation. And that would be, uh, it, it does trigger a felony if you have massive amounts of weapons.
Yes, Dr. Gilroy?
Yes. I've asked several times, uh, being actually in Washington State, Colorado, and being on cutting edge in Washington with medical and full legalization, what should we do first in Missouri? Medical or full legal?
Health.
Home throws or all with regulation?
Yay.
We certainly love the hard way, uh, the travails of doing medical first. As soon as you get medical well entrenched in a, in a state, they're gonna be against full legal because they've got financial incentives for keeping it illegal. That's what I've seen first and foremost. Thank you.
Please state your name and where you're from, sir.
Uh, my name's Rodney Chanzal, I'm in Beatty, Missouri. And I'd like, uh, ask the officers and stuff, that I have a lot of friends that I know that, you know, they used to smoke pot, and when, and they've been, all this drug testing stuff started, they got away, they quit smoking pot because it does drug test for 30, 60 days in your system and stuff. And they started going to the doctors and getting pills and making up excuses like you say. And it, those hats end up costing us, our taxpayers more money, the insurance companies more money. And for what? You know, because you guys are gonna make it all illegal? They don't drug test for alcohol in workplaces.
We drug test for alcohol, we drug test for methamphetamine.
Well, most drug, most factories and businesses that I know of, they drug, they don't drug test for alcohol.
That is, since that's a free enterprise and they own the business, they can test for what they want to.
Well, wouldn't marijuana be a free enterprise if it was totally legal? At this?
Actually, most companies, uh, recognize that alcohol is the number one drug of abuse and more apparent than anything else, and you see on post accident, randoms are pretty clear to close to follow, but a lot of companies don't, but you're exactly right, it is the number one drug of abuse, and a lot of companies don't, they're trying to push them, that is clearly it is number one. And by the way, what's the number one cause of killing young adults? Prescription drugs.
Thank you, Randy.
Why, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Randy. Any other questions?
Randy, remember the law for, you know, laws? That's in the state legislation. Yes, exactly.
Yes, sir. Give us your name and where you're from. Welcome.
Mark Mercer, Goode Hill. I absolutely agree with Mr. Whitley, but, um, he was there too, and I don't see how you can put all of the evils of the world on marijuana, because there's a lot of self-destructive behavior out there, and they'll find some way to kill themselves. And I'm just wondering, what's wrong with feeling good? Serious crime, then, you know, chasing us down to this, I think, which you think we ought to?
If you, if you get the legislature to change it, that's what will be done. But until that point, we're supposed what we are sworn to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
From a law enforcement standpoint, we do not put a, a premium emphasis on going after marijuana, even marijuana dealers unless they, we kind of move into a, a huge bracket. Uh, we do concern ourselves with more serious crime. And I, I don't want you all leaving here thinking, that's all we do, is just go out and look for people smoking pot. That is not our priority. It's not any law enforcement officers. I know all officers in southeastern Missouri, I'm on, uh, several committees nationwide, I teach nationwide. That's not what we do, folks. We are interested in violent crime, reducing it, stopping homicides. Those are the things that we're concerned with, not laying out. It is part of our job, though. And when we run across it, we see somebody violating the law, if they've got marijuana, we have an obligation to do something about it. That's where we're at. They change the law, we'll change a little bit of our tactics, but we do not put emphasis on marijuana violations. We just don't. So if you don't get anything else out of this meeting, understand that we're out here trying to protect your communities from the violent criminals, but at the same time, if we run across somebody violating law, growing marijuana, selling it, whatever, we will act. That's where we sit.
Thank you, David. It's time, go ahead.
I don't think that, uh, you know, law enforcement is really putting a priority on enforcing, you know, arresting people for cannabis possession, but, uh, I think it's a confluence of the fact that there are 90 million people that, uh, use cannabis regularly, there's 100 million people in this country that have. Uh, and so, yes, you, that is the most common thing, most common drug offense that people are arrested for. Uh, and so that's, even if you wanted to, wanted to try to stop it, uh, you know, I think it's going to be very difficult to actually enforce the laws, and that's one of the problems we're bringing up against. So you're spending a lot of resources, even though it's not necessarily your priority, uh, that's still a lot of arrests, and I think it's still distracting from the overall mission.
Thank you, John. Say your name and where you're from.
Uh, good evening. My name's Rob Shadis, and I'm from Quantico, Virginia. Uh, my question's directed to a gentleman in law enforcement, uh, it's a two-part question, actually. First part is, you mentioned before, uh, how a gentleman was involved with, uh, robbing somebody because he couldn't get enough cannabis, because they were broke. I want to ask more directly, have you ever experienced a case where an active violence was incurred because of consumption of cannabis? And a second part, uh, show hands to any of you gentlemen who consume cannabis.
I tried to eat pot. Didn't do anything far in, hadn't any sense. Yeah, but I tried it. No, I did not. When I was in high school and college, I was, uh, in professional rodeo. And at that time, that wasn't a accepted thing, uh, in the professional rodeo circuit.
Any other answers to this question?
Unlike Kevin, yes, I smoked marijuana in college. Yeah, I realized very quickly that I didn't like the effect. I thought it was kind of productive, and I was less of it.
Did it make you any different things?
Yes, Doctor?
And indeed, most people that try cannabis don't try it a second time. It's the paranoia and some of those type things. So indeed, uh, it is not necessarily a try, it's like heroin, you're hooked.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening.
Your, your name and where you're from?
Yes, sir. My name is James Eddings, and I'm from Key Mountain, Missouri. And, um, I want to ask the chief a question. I want you to understand something, that I have the utmost respect for law enforcement. That's all you guys up there. I respect all of you, and the job you have to do, it's a tough job, you put your life on the line. We actually, I think it's a very secure, it's allowed to enter my court with you, chief. And, um, that's the, um, I've worked all my life. I was, um, had top finger clearance, I was in the Air Force, I'm on a Russian Chinese teletype. I, uh, worked as a bonded truck driver for Allied Van Lines, if people understand what that means. I was entrusted, uh, unimpeded with people's, uh, personal belongings and business belongings. And, um, I fell on my head and ended up in a hospital for a year. I've had eight spinal surgeries. Um, I have fibromyalgia, I have arthritis, I have three donor discs, um, two cages and five titanium plates in my spine. And, um, I've had a son who was killed by a drunk driver. I've never met a cop who didn't disagree with the statement that alcohol, that marijuana is safer than alcohol. So, um, um, and then recently, while, uh, while I lived in Washington State, where I, by the way, fought for the Cannabis Child Protection Act, which is full legalization for adults, but stringent guidelines for children. I was going to get another lap surgery, and I discovered I had leukemia, chronic or facetic leukemia, which never goes away. I was diagnosed at level two, that's a zero out of four, zero being almost no leukemia, and four being you're close to death. And after a, a series of six-month cannabis well treatments in Seattle, I went from a two to a zero. Not that cannabis might, might please without my work for prescription for, rather than TEA, add, mind you, um, which is a federal farm. So, uh, getting back to my question with you, chief, is, um, you mentioned that the people don't say the pledge of allegiance anymore. That's something that was started in the 50s in this country. Nobody said the pledge of allegiance before the 50s in schools. So, um, my question to you is, is, um, and I know you might think this is off-base and has nothing to do with the issue at hand, but how do we live in a free country when we don't even control our own money supply? Our money contract supply is controlled by a private bankers, and we don't own our money. That's why I've heard this situation right today, isn't because of drugs, and isn't because of... I want you to understand, I respect you, but it isn't because of drugs and the degradation of society from the freedom of liberties that people fought and died for in the 60s to give us, it's because we're slaves to a bunch of foreign bankers. And until that system ends, I think we're always going to have these kind of problems of economic nature. So there's, getting back to my own personal situation, I just want to, again, remember the question is, how do we live in a free country if we don't control our money supply? That was my question to you, based on what you had to say. But I just, I just don't think there's anybody that can tell me what I can and can't do in the privacy of my own home, especially when it has something to do with something saved by law. The question that you're saying, the money's controlled by... Yeah, the federal resource system, which is a private organization, and it's not a federal, it's not federal, it's private. So we're private bankers that print paper and then loan it to the US government and absorb any interest they can.
Oh, the Chinese do one of the two.
Sure, exactly. And who, and that has nothing to do with marijuana, so I just wanted to let...
Yeah, the only thing, what I was pointing at, or I think I was pointing at, is the fact that I think that's affected society in some of these thought patterns of everything's equal, and that's where I went with that.
Again, I respect you, and I didn't mean anything derogatory.
No, I didn't take it any more than that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Thank you very much.
Sir, thank you for serving your country.
Thank you, sir.
Daryl.
I have a question tonight. Microphone, please, for Daryl. I have a question tonight for the police chief. My question is partially a statistical question, that I don't expect you to know all the numbers through tonight, but at some point, I'd like them to be forwarded to John Payne or S N C R. Since 2007, the Missouri Constitution has stated that all funds seized and drug raids are to be turned over to the school revolving fund, for schools to equally share. Since 2007, how much money has your department sent to this fund each year? Additionally, how much money has your department kept for its own uses each year by utilizing a loophole in the law and calling in federal agents on raids so your department can keep 80% of the fund seized? Thus directly stealing from the students of this state that the money is intended for, according to the state constitution you swore and oath to and enforce, how do you justify this behavior?
Mr. Whiteley, I think he was the head of the Seagull Dirt Task Force. I'm on the board that oversees the Seagull Dirt Task Force, but as far as the numbers, I think he can answer that question better than I can, but in the further, you know...
I've had, during my career with the task force, we have been involved in a lot of asset forfeitures. Again, it is one of those very hot topics, and there's a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding about asset forfeitures, what law enforcement does with it. The state of Missouri has a, their law on asset forfeiture is that if we seize funds, drug proceeds from a criminal, that state of Missouri says that gets forfeited to the school fund, okay? In theory, that's a very good law to have. In practice, that's not what happens. If we seize, let's say, $50,000 from a drug seizure, and it is drug proceeds, it's forfeited to the state of Missouri, it goes into the school fund to fund our schools. That sounds good, you know, they got $50,000 to play with now. Well, in actuality, though, what happens is our state legislators, when they're giving out funding to the schools, and they see that $50,000 going into the school fund from asset forfeiture, they take out $50,000 that they were going to contribute to the school fund. The school fund does not make an additional $50,000 off of that. That's the way the asset forfeiture has been since it came into effect. What law enforcement has done, seeing that there's really no good coming to Missouri on asset forfeiture, because other than funding general revenue, I mean, that's all it really does, we utilize federal forfeiture, which allows us to take that $50,000 that seized from a drug proceeds, and then we can apply through a court system, which has several checks and balances, to make sure that it was a very factual and legitimate seizure, then that $50,000, and actually, it's only 80% of that, federal government gets 20% if I don't forget, but 80% of that $50,000 can come back and be used by local law enforcement for very specific, buying equipment, buying cars, there are very specific requirements. You just can't go out and spend it randomly on whatever you want. It can be utilized by the police department to further enhance the department and the drug investigation for criminal investigation.
Just like our lottery.
Exactly, exactly.
Nevertheless, it's a pretty damn bad idea to have the police department trying to fund their own department by either writing tickets or seizing people's assets. That just doesn't set well with marijuana.
I actually, this is kind of how I got into this particular movement, is I was doing work on asset forfeiture for the Show Me Institute, which is a pre-market think tank up in St. Louis. And the thing is, is that, yes, the point is not necessarily that money is going to the schools, the point is really that it's not going to law enforcement, because it's, the whole point is that the legislature, our elected officials are supposed to be the ones that allocate funding, either that of the people, one of the two, not law enforcement or whatever bureaucratic agency, just basically creating their own budgets. That's a problem, and that's a problem that was, you know, part of the original reason why we got away from the British, is because they were using what amounts of asset forfeiture back then to fund their army that was occupying the country. So I mean, I think this is, that's a pretty systemic problem, if you have an agency that is going around taking things, by the way, in federal forfeiture, you don't have to prove a crime either. You literally charge the property with a crime. And property does not have the same constitutional rights that you or I do. So if you want to take, you know, if you or I get taken to court, the prosecutor will have to prove beyond reasonable doubt that a crime was committed. In federal forfeiture cases, I believe the standard is a preponderance of the evidence, which is a much lower standard, and you never actually have to be charged with a crime. So, you know, you'll see cases that are like, United States versus 1973 Cadillac El Dorado. I believe that is literally one of the ones that I can't cross. And, you know, the El Dorado is sold, and they don't have to charge you with a crime, they just say that, well, it's more likely than not that this El Dorado was used in the commission of crime. Whether you used it in the commission of crime is irrelevant. You could actually have the car stolen from you, and then someone else uses it, and then anything would lose. But yeah, so I think that's a system that's crying out for change as well.
Let's move on. Next question. Name and where you're from.
Yeah, my name's John Martin, I'm from North St. Louis. I'm 30 years old, and I was pretty much born and raised there. And from there, I mean, the cops there, I mean, they're all about safety, children's issues, this and that, blah, blah, blah. You know, all they're worried about is if you got crack, cocaine, heroin, whatnot, you know, they're not worried about marijuana, they're not worried about that at all. Okay, now, I want to know, why is it the government's made it legal for, for bath salt, that to be illegal, which has been killing a lot of people? My best friend, who was 24, he shot himself in the head from the bath salt, which was out there, okay? And I wake up every morning, every afternoon, every evening, and I watch the news, and not once do I see that, oh, you get in the car, right, from smoking marijuana? You blow your head off from smoking marijuana, you know? But with the bath salt and everything, which is still out there, by the way, you know, it's still up in some areas, like St. Charles and this and that, okay? How come, how come that's okay to have that out there, but that, the marijuana, I mean, I mean, come on, that hasn't hurt anybody.
What's your question?
I just want to know why, why it's okay that when you get pulled over for, when you get pulled over and you have a cop find a broach in the car, or a joint in the car, or a certified parental license card, you get anywhere between $5,000 to $10,000 on, and you have to stay in jail if you can't make that, and you have to stay there for a month or two. I mean, you get in total trouble for that. How come that is, and with bath salt, you get out like two days later if that?
I have a theory on that. I have a theory on that. I've been saying this to law enforcement in Springfield, why the hell are these head shops that sell K2 and bath salts right up your nose for year after year, and then finally bust it? It's because when they're busted, they get $800 million dollars. It's just a matter of time. It's fall, or let the kitty grow, I'm for it.
I will strongly dissent on that, because bath salts, the synthetic marijuana, the synthetic methamphetamine that is out there, the synthetic cocaine, bath salts, K2 spice, these are products, you're right, they are killing people. They are way, way more worse than marijuana is.
Eight hundred times stronger K2 is. Eight hundred times stronger than cannabis. He's right.
The problems we're having with those, and it's, again, it falls back on our legislators. The chemical structures of those are very hard to establish, and the people that are manufacturing these drugs continually change the chemical makeup. So the United States, Missouri, whatever state comes in and says, "This particular chemical's illegal." The people manufacturing these products change that chemical structure just a little bit, and now it's no longer legal. We are continually playing catch-up with those synthetic drugs. It's a, it's a constant battle where we identify what they are, we legislate and put it into a classification of the Schedule I or Schedule II, generally Schedule I, because there's no medical use for them at all. But then the people that are manufacturing these, they just make a little change, and now it's a completely different drug. So we can't catch up with it, and that's why they continually sell them in these stores. And it is, it's a huge moneymaker for them.
Thanks, Daryl. In Missouri, we have time for one more question, one more question, and then this session will end.
Susan Sinclair from Keylin, Missouri. My question is inspired because of what Jim had said. He said something about the drug robbery that had taken place, that there was a violent crime, that men had killed the drug dealer and everything. In your opinion, is it because of the marijuana or because of the valuable asset that this drug dealer had? Also, in the woman that was involved, and her kid was running around, and everything was nasty, do you really think that that could be caused by marijuana only? Wouldn't that be more of a deal of who came in and caught her, maybe she had taken drugs, there was marijuana there, and so it's being blamed on marijuana? There would be different situations, and I think that all of y'all will be able to think about, and see, this could possibly have happened because of marijuana only. They would have, had to have been drugged if some other had been, maybe they were drunk, maybe they were... And so because of this, can y'all ever be lenient because of those kind of circumstances? Does the law provide you to be more lenient because you don't, surrounding the circumstances, or you have to be hardcore? There is a joint, she's going to jail, it's a joint.
She's asking law enforcement, can we have a response?
When I go into a home, and you tell the doctor that the child's diaper has not been changed in enough time that there's mold growing out of it, and there's marijuana there, not just one joint, I don't think that you should be lenient. You have to protect that child. A child cannot speak for itself, just like elderly, the elderly. I don't think you should be lenient when people abuse that. They cannot take care or speak for themselves. Now, it's up to psychiatrists and psychologists to get to the problem of what exactly got that person there. But I don't think law enforcement turning a blind eye to it and saying, "Oh, it's just marijuana, it's okay now," is the right thing to do. If you want to legalize it, lobby your legislature to legalize it. Then we take it up above the law. You change the law, we don't have to uphold it? We won't uphold it? Very simple.
Thank you.
Can I get one thing in about that, probably? So, you know, I think the issue is, if somebody is in that condition, yeah, I absolutely think that they should be charged with child endangerment, you know, but it's not necessarily the substances there that's the problem, that at least, you know, yes, they may be abusing that substance, but hypothetically, if law enforcement were to judge alcohol by the people they encounter that are drunk, you probably would have a really unfavorable opinion of alcohol as well. But you've got to realize that 90% of people who drink do not ever cause problems for law enforcement. And that's, I think, the same sort of thing that's going on with cannabis. But once you guys are called in, it often is that situation. So I think it's a little bit of a skewed perspective that you guys have.
Last question here.
Angela from Hoppert Bluffin, actually, Jeff had answered the question I wanted to ask, is what specifically would you recommend to the folks here that would like to change the current laws to do, help bring about change? And you mentioned, talk with your legislature. So, there you go. Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Daryl, I just wanted to add on that statistical question, basically, they, the police officers basically have no choice. When they find that substance in that building, or wherever they're at, it automatically, because the marijuana's there, becomes a marijuana causation, because of the way it has, they statistically have to list the crime. So the statistics get skewed greatly by that occurring, and it happens quite a bit with people under the influence and driving, due to the fact they could have smoked a joint 28 days earlier, they get in a car crash, and when the hospital does their blood, they find THC, it is automatically listed as a, accident was caused by marijuana, even though that person wasn't under the influence at the time. So the statistics get skewed greatly due to the facts of, of the way it has to be listed or anything that's hurt.
Joining, showing our appreciation to the panel, glad. Thank you for everybody in the spirit, and thank you for a good night. Thank you for being a proud staff, sir.